Good evening, everyone. I would like to call to order the this regular meeting of the King George County Board of Supervisors. We're going to start out the evening with an invocation by Mrs. Kupka and the Pledge of Allegiance by Mr. Miller. So at this time, if you could all please stand.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, thank you for bringing us together here this evening to conduct the business of King George County. Watch over all who gather here this evening, and we ask that you provide travel mercies as we leave and go back to our homes and all of our different directions. We especially ask that you bless us with courage and wisdom to make the decisions that will allow our community to grow and prosper both now and in the future. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Kupka. Mr. Miller, any amendments to the agenda?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, I would like to open the floor up right now for general public comment. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person in order to afford everyone an opportunity to speak. If comments relate to a specific public hearing item, we ask that you offer those comments at the time of the public hearing. And if you do wish to come up to speak, please state your name and your address. Anyone here for public comment? Sir, step right up.
Hi, my name is Anthony Stats. I live at 9007 Claire Street. And I moved to the King George when I was in middle school. And I've really seen this county transform into something I personally don't recognize anymore. We see crime increase, and I really am seeing the values that many move here to enjoy slowly and slowly disappear. And it hurts me as someone who moved here to enjoy those little county experiences, I'm slowly seeing those deplete. And, you know, also as a young person, I feel like our young people aren't involved in the process. And it's something that I feel like the county and all of us need to do a better job at. And I'm also worried about a lot of the things that the board discussed have a very huge impact on young people. We're going to be paying for a lot of these projects long after many people on the board are gone. And it's very sad to see a lot of people not involved in the process, one, but also a lot of people on the board not understanding that young people are really taking the burden of a lot of the things that the board is passing. And I really hope that the board looks at the bigger picture and understands that in a couple of years, our county is going to transform in ways we can't even imagine right now. And we can take examples of Fredericksburg. Fredericksburg used to not be the big city it is now. And the board really has to understand that we have a choice. Do we want to keep our King George values? Or do we want to be the next Fredericksburg? Then that's Spotsylvania. And I think that the decision is really clear, and I hope the board makes the right one. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else for public comment?
Good evening. May I approach?
Sure.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, we visited the Great Oaks subdivision in Manassas. We stood about 800 feet from an Amazon data center campus. You have it in front of you, more than two football fields away. In between was a vegetative buffer of about 450 feet of full-grown deciduous evergreen and understory trees with shrubs and bushes throughout. It did nothing for the sound. Here's a sample of what it sounded like. Data centers, solar farms, and battery storage facilities are by right in industrial zones. These are relatively new across other localities and entirely new in King George. There's a lot more we do not know about these, many unintended consequences and citizens' impacts that aren't realized until after operation begins. And those consequences and impacts are difficult to correct and take a long time to do so, if even possible. We need to make data centers and the other two uses by special exception only. This will ensure that applications are individually examined by staff, the planning commission, the board, along with two public hearings, to give the public's voice an opportunity to be heard and considered. This also gives an applicant multiple opportunities to earn the trust of government and the public. Government's job is to protect the citizens. Hearing their input enables you to do that. This is imperative to make sure we make the right decisions. Noise from data centers to nearby property owners is a very serious issue being experienced now by neighbors of data centers. We do not want the same. Most noise ordinances do not specify sound levels for specific frequency bands of human hearing. Noise thresholds specific to data centers should use the decibel Z as in zebra scale with different maximum decibel levels set for day and night for human hearing octaves. The Warrenton zoning ordinance is a great example of this. All applicants should conduct a noise modeling study in the application process and a noise site survey before operation commences. Both of these should be total noise sources, both at the data center and at locations six feet or more within all adjacent and nearby non-industrial uses. We also need a distinction between the definition of a data center and data center campus. A data center is a single building. A data center campus is more than one data center in close proximity irrespective of the applicant or end user. Sound adds, so a campus will make more noise for each building added. Please consider these things. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fairfax. Greetings.
Hello. Debbie Fairfax, 623 Kings Highway. We heard that same sound sitting at someone's kitchen table a quarter mile away. They make a constant droning sound with both high and low frequencies, 24/7, 365. A citizen whose home abutted the Cyrus One facility in Chandra, Arizona, told me personally there were folks up to four miles away who could hear a whir from those vans. In Limestone, Tennessee, the sound could be heard as far as five miles away, and was reported at a church one mile away to sound like a jet plane idling on a tarmac. Today, I read about a poultry farm in Pennsylvania who had income loss due to chickens dying from the noise pollution from a not-that-nearby Bitcoin mine. We have no idea how the sound will carry across the open fields or through the woods of our county. We have a unique situation here. Our industrial park was plopped in between our homes, not secluded miles away, and we don't have numerous structures to break the sound as in a suburban area. We cannot make people's homes unlivable and at the same time unsalable. Data centers have serious life-altering, well-documented noise issues that cost time, money, and lots of publicity to even possibly improve after the fact. Data centers like solar farms and battery storage facilities are new to King George with unique round-the-clock operations. None of these should be by right and industrial, at least for a while. We want to attract industry, and our comparatively low land prices and access to water and the grid are enticing. If you want to see these industries in King George, then you should be the very first to want them by special exception so that you can help ensure their success, their longevity, and their neighborliness. If there is no vacant industrial property, there are actually two separate decisions on the table. One is whether a specific property should be rezoned, and the other is the details of the particular project. With these new uses, which have huge learning curves associated and lots of details, even our most seasoned and capable commissioners don't have the experience with these industries to fall back on. It will take additional time and attention to fully and fairly consider a site plan. Public hearings allow ample, uninterrupted, easily accessible, widely disseminated publicity time. This is the time to sell the public and the decision-makers on the proposal. Why is this a win-win situation? How has the corporation listened to the needs of the citizens and sought to be a good neighbor? How will the corporation's success translate to a benefit to our county? How can the corporation heartily prosper yet strive to preserve the rural character that nearly all the citizens hold dear? Bring the specifics into the light. If this is a good thing, show it. The public is not hostile to industry. They are rightfully leery of predatory industry that seeks to steamroll people and hide behind secrecy. Corporations who sincerely desire to be good neighbors and to thrive alongside King George residents should welcome the opportunity to display that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fairfax. Anyone else for general public comment? All right, seeing none, Mr. Dot. Ms. Jordan.
Good evening, everyone. Claudette Jordan, 11773 Big Bear Lane, Lesby, Maryland, King George native. And thank God for the bridge opening because it makes it so easy now. Don't have to leave the meetings before they're over and get on that rickety bridge. It's just been a breeze. Once again, I just want to thank the board here and Mr. Miller and Kelly, our attorney, and all of you for the steadfast work you're doing with the Ralph Bunch Project. And it's all the buzz. Everyone is just so excited about this. I've gotten phone calls that the trucks are dropping off supplies to do the roof. And in case you can't see, I'm wearing a Visualize and Rise sweatshirt tonight. And this is in support of Jermann Bushrod and the Visualize and Rise Foundation. It's a wonderful partnership. We're already, you know, walking and talking, meeting and greeting, and doing all kinds of wonderful things. The Ralph Bunch Advisory Committee, these folks are serious, and they bring, again, their expertise, their desire, their resources, and the commitment to make this happen. You'll hear a report later tonight from the chair of the committee to, again, say what we're doing and how we're intending to do it. And the members of the Ralph Bunch Alumni Association are just tickled pink. And we want to stay with the momentum that we have. It's not too slow. If I could speed up like I do on the bridge, I will. So thank you so, so much for all you do and continue to do.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Anyone else for public comment? All right, seeing none, Mr. Dines. Anyone online?
I believe Mr. Lynch will either call in or try to use his computer. Mr. Lynch?
Yes. Are we online? Are we online? Online. You have an echo. Yes, we can hear you.
It seems like he's been disconnected on his cell phone.
All right, he was the only one?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Board, anybody get any emails or anything?
I didn't have one to read explicitly, but Mr. Lynch did send one. Did, if you want, I could read it. Just, I'm imagining he's probably calling in to speak upon this topic. So, okay.
Sure. I mean, since he's having technical difficulties, if you would read, then that'd be great.
Sure. So it's for Jim Lynch. I'll be honest, I don't know his address. He didn't include in his email. But, dear members of the board, as you recall, the Department of Conservation and Recreation, DCR, was directed by the General Assembly to conduct a suitability study for the Dahlgren Railroad Heritage Trail, DRHT, to be added to the Caledon State Park. That study has been completed and was made available to the public yesterday, Monday, October 17. The study is available at, and he provides the URL. While we are still studying the report, there are several conclusions to bring to your attention. DCR staff reached out to community members via direct mail, telephone interviews, and a listening session held in King George. These outreach efforts note significant community support for the trail. The report also identifies several issues that need to be resolved as a part of the state park incorporation process. Additional property acquisition, primarily for parking, trail realignment around Little Ark Baptist Church, the underground utility easement, and mitigating possible safety issues with regard to the gun range. These are not new topics of interest, and we will, of course, continue to work within our resources on them. The report concludes that the DRHT would be a good addition to Caledon. End quote. "The corridor appears suitable for the development and incorporation in Caledon State Park." End quote. At this point, we're trying to discern the next steps for a way forward. This is a great report, but it's a start, not a finish. Jim Lynch.
All right, thank you, Mr. Granger. Mr. Lynch, sorry if you can hear us. I'm sorry we couldn't get you online, but we were having some technical difficulties. So, all right, if that's all we have for public comment, we will close public comment and move to report to members of the board. Mrs. Bender?
Yes, thank you very much. I'll go through. I attended the Fall Festival. It was a great event. It was very exciting to see a lot of people that came out from the community that participated. I know I floated, I was in the parade along with some of my colleagues. I floated around between four booths and the organizations that I'm affiliated with, and I talked to a lot of citizens who gave me kudos, complaints, and a bunch of other things. But it's great listening to people because you actually get to hear what they have to say. And I want to give a special shout out to the sheriff's office, our EMS, the volunteers that came out and gave their time, and the Fall Festival Committee who put on a nice show. And especially, I saw a lot of kids involved with the rides and the blow-up area and with the bounce house and the games. And it was cool to see everybody with a smile on their face, and it was a good community event. I participated a couple days ago in a Zoom call with VACO put together with the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services. And most of the conversation is a listening about looking for long-term solutions and crisis stabilization for those that have mental health issues and trying to keep them out of hospitals and going to the root causes and correcting things in the front end instead of institutionalizing. So I'm sure we're going to be hearing more about that because the governor is doing quite a few listening tours on this issue and on affordable housing. So we'll be hearing more about that in the future. I attended with Mr. Stonehill the bridge opening. It was a great event. It was nice to see. Unfortunately, with it opening, even though it's great for travel, we will probably be seeing a lot more cars and development. I know, I live on 301, and there's a lot more cars to get out of my driveway. But one of the coolest things for me was being able to walk on the bridge. It was probably the only time, unless I'm stuck in traffic on the bridge, that you'd be able to walk across the bridge. So that was really nice. And the workers got to be part of it, and that was nice to see because they were very proud of their work, and they should be because they did a nice job. Going through on my list here. One other thing I'd like to, Ms. Kupka and I, we had an impromptu visit with Senator Mark Warner, and we had some good conversation with him. Two of the things that I stressed to him and I've always talked about is the monopoly with the Internet and allowing other people to be able to tap into the resources that are coming here. And that was one thing. And then the last I brought up, and I've mentioned this before, especially concerning the Buckler House, is the Federal Parks to Land Program and how the hampering we have with that one particular part of the land swap we did for the bridge and maybe be able to sell it so that we can use the money towards upgrading our parks. So he was interested in more conversation on that. So I'll be following up with that. And then last but not least, concerning the historical society, Mr. Mason called me a couple days ago and had stressed that they really have an importance in working with us to get the historical society open. A lot of people come over to the courthouse looking for genealogy and a lot of other things, and they'd like to somehow get it open a little sooner rather than later, and especially with our Christmas tree lighting coming up. And Ms. Parker gave me a good update on how well they did at the Fall Festival and how many volunteers are now with a new vision, are excited about coming to volunteer and make it more robust and youth-oriented. So I've talked to Ms. Lucky earlier and today about that, and she'll be bringing up some things in her county attorney's report about some ways that we might possibly be able to have an opening a little sooner rather than later, knowing that there's more to follow. And I want to thank everybody who came and spoke and to, I didn't exactly get your name, Anthony, I missed your last name. I have my card up here. I used to coach. I'd love to sit down and talk with you for you. So on your way out, just pick up a card, and I'd love to talk with you and your friends about things that youth are interested in with the county. So thank you for coming. It's really good. I encourage a lot of young people to come and talk. A lot of people are afraid to come and talk, but we don't bite. Just come on up and give public comment and tell us what you're thinking. And I thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bender. Mr. Granger?
Yes, sir. Thank you. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to everyone who came and provided comment. I was hoping Ms. Bender caught Anthony's last name. I apologize, I missed it as well. So I apologize, but thank you so much for coming out. I would agree, we don't often see youth come to these meetings and provide comments. So thank you for coming and starting to get involved, and I would hope you'd encourage your friends as well. And I would say, I agree with you that our decisions do impact young people. I think they impact everyone in the county, all citizens. I can appreciate, though, that, yes, it definitely has an impact on the youth as well. So I would agree, being involved definitely helps in having your voice heard. So, and local government is where you have a lot of impact on people, and it's where your voice can be one of the loudest. So please continue to come out and share your opinions and what you would like to see. Fairfax, I appreciate you again coming out. I also received your emails well about data centers, so I appreciate the information and what you've provided, and thank you for your comments upon those. Ms. Jordan, thank you again. I always appreciate positive comments. So I do appreciate that, though. Thank you. And I think we're looking forward to the opportunity to continue working and seeing this project all the way to fruition. And then lastly, Mr. Lynch, I appreciate the email. I apologize that you had some technical difficulties, but yes, thank you for providing the link to the DCR report, and I will be reviewing that as well. So other than that, I'd just like to say, so on Wednesday, October 5th, I'd like to say thank you to the Commissioner of Revenue, Ms. Hart, and the Treasurer, Mr. Jones, for the joint meeting that we had in order to discuss personal property tax and the evaluation going forward and some of those topics that we discussed. So thank you for that and your inputs in helping us to make an informed decision moving forward. Like to say thank you for Saturday, October 8th, the Fall Festival. I attended that. I'd like to say thank you to the Fall Festival Committee for the invitation to come out and the opportunity to walk in the parade. And I was also able to be there for a portion of the Fall Festival. I apologize, I had to leave a little early. My wife wasn't feeling well, and I apologize, I didn't get to stay as long as I was hoping. But I did get to speak to some people, and I appreciate it, those opportunities to speak with people as well. And then yesterday, Monday, October 17th, we had an FRE meeting. Biggest thing I take out of that is continuing to work the Dahlgren Tech Transfer, where they're looking to bring the IPs, intellectual properties that are patents on the base and trying to find a way to market them in order to have businesses take them and then run with them from the idea of, you know, obviously starting a business with that patent. And so they're in the process of working to get 50 to 60 quad charts, which are just single sheets that kind of describe the idea of what the patent's about and like it's a summary, in order to try to facilitate a November-December timeframe meeting where they're going to try to really market those ideas and see if we can get some traction in regards to kind of getting those out. So it's exciting. Go ahead, but thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Granger. Ms. Kupka.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to start by thanking everyone who joined us here in person or online this evening. Thank you very much for coming out. To the young man, I think your name is Anthony? That's what my colleagues seem to have heard. Thank you for coming out. I would reiterate my colleagues' comments. We don't very often see young people here, so it is encouraging, as we look to the future of our community, to see someone as yourself here. I will tell you, when I ran for office in 2019, my campaign slogan, as it were, was, "I came here for this community. Let's work together to keep it." Because I saw the things that you saw when I came here 17 years ago. I will tell you, our community is not the same as it was when I came here 17 years ago. There are some longtime residents here in the audience who can tell you the same thing. So part of growing as a community, there is a give and take, and we have many more citizens than we did, so we have many more needs. And I believe everyone on this board wants to work together to provide for the needs of our community, but also to try to maintain the reasons why we came here in the first place, if we weren't born here, if we were come-hers like me. We did come here for a reason, and we want to do what we can. We're willing to put in the hard work and sometimes make very hard decisions to provide for the future of our community. So thanks for taking the time to come out tonight, and look forward to seeing you again and hearing some more from you. Mr. and Mrs. Fairfax, thank you for your continued research and dialogue and bringing to our attention some of the things that go along with data centers. I appreciate your diligence and your passion. Ms. Jordan, thank you for coming out, and I'm glad to hear you have a much better experience on the Nice Bridge, and thanks for your comments about the work of the Ralph Bunch Advisory Committee. And Mr. Lynch, if you can hear me, thank you very much for your email this afternoon and sharing with us the information about the DRHT feasibility study update. Let's see. Ms. Bender mentioned on October 7th, we had an impromptu meeting with Senator Mark Warner at the Administration Office. We spoke with him about the Ralph Bunch High School Project. I reiterated my request directly to him that I had made of staff for a letter of support for our National Park Service grant application for $750,000. That's due next month. He previously supported us in our prior grant award and provided us a letter of support. So I think we can expect that, and he also indicated that perhaps there was more he could do. We'll see how that goes. We also spoke to him about our regional broadband project and how the FCC defines served areas, as Ms. Bender stated, the new Nice Bridge and the V dot land swap that resulted. And he indicated that another tranche of infrastructure funding would be released shortly, and that locality should be on the lookout for it. The next day, October 8th, attended the King George Fall Festival Parade and hosted a county information table at the high school. It was a great turnout. I felt like there were, I felt like it was back. They had it last year. It wasn't as big as it had been in prior years. They did have to cancel it in 2020 because of COVID. I just, it felt like Fall Festival was back this year. So that was great. Thank you to everyone, all the volunteers, everyone who worked that event to put that event on every year. Wednesday and Thursday, October 12th and 13th, I attended the Governor Summit on Rural Prosperity hosted by the Virginia Rural Center in Smithfield, Virginia. There were seven secretaries from Governor Youngkin's cabinet who served as panelists at the conference, and I'm working on a full report of the information I gathered while I was there. More to follow. Last night, I attended the Department of Social Services Administrative Board meeting. I have an appointment to that board I wish to make. I move to appoint Mr. Michael Muth II to the vacant at-large seat on the Department of Social Services Administrative Board.
Second.
We have a motion properly seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes.
Thank you. I've received a complaint, actually, at the Fall Festival. If you are a consumer of Power Home Solar, now known as Pink Energy, which filed for bankruptcy last month and are having issues getting your system serviced, please visit the Virginia Attorney General's website. I received a call back from them today regarding my inquiry. They have an open file. They want to hear from you. Please visit their website to file a formal complaint. Again, that's OAG.state.vA.us. Click on the tab that says Citizens Resources and the dropdown that says Consumer Protection. Likewise, if you have a telephone service complaint, I know we've had lots of those lately, and I know that many of our constituents have been trying to deal directly with the telephone companies and perhaps are not getting the results they desire. If you are a Virginia resident, you can visit the State Corporation Commission website likewise to file a formal complaint, SCC.Virginia.gov. Click on the tab that says Consumers, then Public Utilities, and then click Communications to file a complaint. And I would just remind everyone that in powerhouse... House is having their domestic violence annual vigil for victims on Tuesday, October 25, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. at 718 venue in Fredericksburg. That's all I have. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Kupka. Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Welcome, everybody, this evening. It's good to see everyone out. Anthony, I enjoyed talking to you on the phone the other day. Bring some other young folks out. Be involved. Mr. and Mrs. Fairfax, could we enter this into the record, the document they gave us? Thank you for the visual. It's good to see. And thank you for the soundbite. I always look forward to you folks coming and having a dialogue with the board in regards to this information. I also want to make sure you understand that I'm not a fan of by right, because we do lose control using by right. So special exception, especially in the industrial location, would be best suited for our county. Ms. Jordan, good to see you. I read your business plan. It was very good. I hear we're going to hear some more about that shortly. And Mr. Lynch, thanks for being involved in that project and continue to be in board on that project. I'm sorry I couldn't make Wednesday's meeting, but I did receive the transcript tonight. Thank you. And I look forward to reading that and see what happens. That concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. I wanted to say thanks for everybody that came out tonight this evening. Anthony, stats, wasn't it? All right. I was the one, all right, I get the gold scar tonight. So thanks for coming out. Like the rest of the folks did say, you know, we don't get a chance to see a lot of young folks that come out. We had a man, a young man on our EDA. He was maybe 19, 18, 19 years old when he first came out. And he was appointed to the EDA, which is the Economic Development Authority. And it was really interesting to have his perspective on things, being, you know, a young gentleman. There are a lot of boards and stuff that, you know, young folks can get involved with. And, you know, you can, it helps, it helps us out to hear younger people's perspective on things and get some involved. I mean, so by all means, come to our meeting, have your friends come out. You know, we're always here. We always like to hear from people. Fairfax, thank you for all of your information. You guys really dig up some very good information. I did get your email as well, you know, with your other photos on it. Appreciate all the work that you've done. And like I said, we're gonna, we're gonna do our best when we move forward. And, you know, we, you know, we certainly need these things in King George. But, you know, hopefully, we're gonna do it correctly as best we can. So thank you for all your homework and information. And please continue. Ms. Jordan, thanks for coming out. Good business plan. You and I guess Ms. Parker will read out for us. And yes, the bridge was a very nice, nice thing. And I hope you're still doing well with your recovery. And Mr. Lynch, if you're still out there, thanks for the, I also got an email. And sorry that you were having technical difficulty. Technology is wonderful when it works. Back on the 5, we did have a work session on taxing issues. I just wanted to thank staff, Commissioner Revenue, and Mr. Jones from the Treasurer's Office for coming out and supplying all that information. Did have a couple of phone calls and reference taxing and property taxes, which are coming due here very shortly. We're going to continue working on that. As Mrs. Binder did say, I did come to the bridge opening. And here is a, for proof, here is a piece of the ribbon that we cut, you know, the opening of the bridge. So I needed to make sure we have this. Mr. Miller, we'll give this to you. And maybe you can put it in a frame for somewhere in the boardroom. This is a, an honest-to-God piece of the ribbon. Yeah, that'd be great.
I can attest. I was there when it was cut.
And I just, you know, it was very interesting to be standing up on that bridge. And like I said, Mrs. Binder, I said, I hope this is the only time I'm ever standing on this bridge. It's a long ways down. It's a big bridge. But it was a really good present, you know, it was a really good bridge opening. Governor Hogan was there, plus all his staff. And it was really interesting to, to talk to the workers and actually people that actually built it with their hands. It was great that they were all really involved there as well. And they did have a lot of photos that were up. And they had the crew that drove the final steel beam from the bridge back in the 40s, whenever it opened. And then it also had the new group that drove the last pole just here recently. I was, I was kind of surprised that they got it open. I went across it on Tuesday, and there was still a lot of stuff on that bridge. And I kept thinking that, hmm, it's not going to be open on Wednesday. But they did it. It was cleaned up Wednesday morning at 9 o'clock when we got there. So that was a great, great experience to be up on the bridge. And it's, it's going to clear up a lot of problems. It's going to clear up a lot of problems, but then it's going to bring a lot of problems. So it's kind of a mixed blessing here. So and then on this past Friday, I attended the Dogren Downtown, which was put on by NSWC. And that was at the old Silk Mill in Fredericksburg. And it was an all-day event. They did have all kinds of displays about the history of Dogren and how it, how it, Dogren itself works with the entire region. And as Mr. Granger said, we did, about the patents that were coming out of the government and the military side into the public, there was, you know, a lot of talk on that as well. And then they had a very nice dinner. Mr. Sisson and the new commander came out, and they were the guest speakers, plus a number of other folks. It was a very, very nice event. They did a very good job. I did speak to them about trying to move it to King George next year. So we'll see what happens. And that is the end of my report. So thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda?
Move to adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion properly seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes. All right, moving on to County Officials' report. First up, Mr. Jones.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and colleagues. First, just want to say thanks to organizing the workshop that we had back on October 5. I definitely found it very helpful. And it's always good to feel like your voice is heard. So I really do appreciate that meeting. Secondly, tax bills are out. Revenue is steadily coming back in. Just a quick note to citizens, if you have not received your tax bill, please contact our office, and we can get a duplicate out to you in whatever manner you need. And the Treasurer Report for September 2022, monthly receipts and expenditures. We began in the general fund with a balance of $42,966,111.87. County received $21,729,234.67 in revenue. We dispersed $29,912,886.86, leaving a ending balance in the general fund of $34,782,459.68. And as with the last two months, it has not been closed or reconciled to the general ledger, just awaiting the final county audit.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Jones? All right. Thank you, Mr. Jones. And Mr. Miller, if you would, make sure that gets into the minutes, please. All right. Next up, cigarette tax collection. I guess Mrs. Hart.
Good evening, board members, Mr. Miller and Mrs. Lackey. Also, I'd like to thank you for the work session. I think it was a good evening. It was a lot of good information passed around. And we're working on a few of the things that y'all had requested for our next meeting, Randy and I are. Right now, current to date on the sales of the cigarette tax, $2879,382. On September 22, 2022, Deputy Simon in Deanna visited all 28 stores, and they were all in compliance. And they all, meaning they all had the stamps on the cigarettes. And for the month of September, the packs of cigarettes sold 292,934. But that, the due date for that report is due the 20th. So there are some that we haven't heard from. It's due on the 20th for the previous month. And the 20th is a couple days away. Any questions?
Any questions for Mrs. Hart?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, ma'am, for coming out tonight for the update on cigarette tax collection. Can you remind me that year-to-date figure, is that calendar year-to-date since January 1, or is that fiscal year-to-date since July 1?
That's from day 1, when we started July 1 of 2021. So it's a year and...
So that would be 15 months worth of a collection.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hart. Can you, can you give me those numbers again? It was $2,879?
$879,382.
$382. And what was the monthly total?
The packs sold $292,934.
Mr. Chair, I just want to ask a clarified question. Ms. Hart, you just gave the total for the year. Is that from the fiscal year or the whole calendar year?
That is from the beginning, when we started, July 1 of 2021.
Okay. And what was the total again? I'm sorry. $382. Thank you.
Would you all, do you want it from fiscal year? I mean, I'm adding to our whole total.
I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
I would be interested in knowing a fiscal year perspective, just because that's when we're planning, obviously, each year to have better understanding.
That's broken down for the next time.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Ms. Hart is also in the audience. She might be able to provide that. Sorry. Ms. Hawn is in the audience. Ms. Hart is at the podium. Ms. Hawn is in the audience. She may be able to provide that, because we did, obviously, now, these are unaudited, but should be pretty accurate.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the board. So I don't know the exact figure, but I know at year-end, we were at approximately $2.3 million. So if we're at $2.8, that leaves about $500,000 this fiscal year.
So, Mrs. Hart, just one last question before you leave. So that was basically 293,000 packs for the month of September over all of the stores here in King George and Sal Crack, correct?
Mm-hmm. Yes, but some of them hadn't reported that.
Okay. All right. Because it's due the 20th. Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, moving along.
Mr. Chair, this is Sheriff Giles. I have my constitutional report.
Oh, sorry, Sheriff Giles. I thought she, Mrs. Hart, was giving that from Deputy Simon in Deanna. But go right ahead, sir.
I apologize for not being there in person. I am away on training right now out of the county. But Ms. Hart did kind of steal a little bit of my thunder as far as the inspection part. But I did want to let you know that next week, we're going to take the seized cigarettes that we seized last year down to a company in Ashland to get them stamped. And then we're going to try to auction them off. So that will be a revenue that the county will have here in the next couple of months. And I'm not sure, right off the top of my head, as to what that value would be. We'll know better after the auction. So a second part of my report would be the fact that we had a kickoff meeting for the new public safety radio system yesterday with Motorola. And they gave us a preliminary schedule, which I can certainly provide in an email to the board members if they request it. But they're looking for a final acceptance date and a cut-over date from the old radio systems to the new in July of 2024. So that's the preliminary schedule. And again, I can provide a little bit more broken-down schedule if the board requests it. But other than that, that would be the end of my report unless somebody has any questions.
Anyone have questions for Sheriff Giles? I don't think so. Thank you, serve. All right. Now moving on to the County Attorney, Mrs. Lackey.
I do have several matters this evening. I'll go ahead and start with the one that is specifically on the agenda. This is Public Financing RFP Resolution. There's actually two resolutions. There's two resolutions in the agenda. At your place, there is an updated resolution related to the courthouse completion financing. I would describe most of the changes as clarifying. They update the referenced documents that are required to achieve the financing. We do have our financial consultant and our bond counsel here. They can answer additional questions. But I can go ahead and give you a quick, quick overview. You'll recall that this matter was presented at the last board meeting, at the October 4 board meeting. So the courthouse completion is additional financing of $12,150,000 at an interest rate of 3.76%. That would be financed through Webster Bank. Now, because the courthouse financing had already, was partially financed with 2020 bonds, there's a lot of moving parts. We have to amend the 2020 bonds so that there can be an additional issuance of funds. And there's also action that would be required by the Economic Development Authority, because mechanically speaking, there's, through the, through the Industrial Development and Revenue Bond Act, it's authorized that the EDA can actually lease the property to the county as a mechanism to secure the creditor. So the creditor, it will be getting a, provided that the board authorizes it, the creditor would be getting a moral obligation. So that's a pledge. It's not legally enforceable. But they would also have a security in the sense that they have a lease arrangement whereby the EDA is leasing the courthouse to the county for a period of 20 years, over which they can recover theoretically the cost of the loan. It's all subject to appropriations. So there's, that's all follows, you know, what's allowed by law, and bond counsel can advise if there's additional comments on that. The proposed resolution authorizes the county administrator to finalize the required documents to secure the financing. I do, did have a few legal comments on some of the, not the resolution that's before you, but on some of the other documents that are being discussed with the bank. I don't think they are obstacles to getting resolved. One is just to acknowledge that the most recent fiscal year audit is still in progress. There were some blanks that yet to be filled in in the first supplemental indenture of trust, which is the document that amends those 2020 bonds. But those just need to be updated as the project progresses and amounts and dates and things are finalized. And Mr. Bausch let me know that the bank may also be asking me to just verify that the county still has good title to the property where the courthouse is being built. So I don't see any of those as potential obstacles. But if there are additional questions, Mr. Lau and Mr. Bausch are available. So this, this is just the courthouse component. So if there are questions on that, I'll just pause now.
Any questions for Mrs. Lackey? Ms. Kupka?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Lackey, can I direct you to page 3, number 4 of the resolution, please? So it talks about the dollar amount, the interest rate, 20 years, and says, "including but not limited to changes in the principal payment amounts dated dates." Should that be?
Going to defer to Mr. Talau on that.
You know, I'll, a, a quick answer. So the, the dated date there is, is way kind of down in the weeds in terms of the financing. That's really just the, the date the loan closes and interest accrues from there. So I think that really just, I'll defer to lawyers, gives a little bit of flexibilities who move towards closing with, with your action. If it moves a little bit one day or another, just kind of gives that ability to, to do that.
Got it. Thank you very much.
Any other questions for anyone? Mr. Collins?
Mr. Chairman, so. The opportunity to read the resolution, I'm, I'm not quite understanding. Webster Bank was going to be the financer. And there's a additional bonds of indenture and trust date November 1, 2020, Wilmington Trust National Association. I didn't understand. An amount of 12,150?
Mr. Collins, I may be, be able to give a little bit of context there. So if the question maybe is the Wilmington Trust piece of it? So Webster Bank is the bank that's making the loan. And then what Wilmington Trust does, and this really ties into the fact that the courthouse financing is, is kind of, it's additional financing kind of tied to that 2020 loan. And so what Wilmington Trust does is simply serve as the trustee for those bonds. So they're not making any loans. They simply kind of coordinate the various payments from the 2020 bonds and these Webster Bank bonds and serve as an intermediary. And that's really it. So it's kind of a, just a functionary role to make sure the payments go from the county to the right place. If that's, if that's your question.
Yes, that was, that was part of my question. Also, is, is this loan, um, is, can Webster Bank sell the loan?
Uh, no. They, uh, there's some specific language in there that says, um, Jesse, you can correct me if I get this a little bit wrong, but they basically say they have no present intention to sell the loan. So in the context of governmental finance, a little bit different than a mortgage, what they really are doing is representing that they're making you, as a county, the loan. And, uh, they're not allowed to because it's not a security in the eyes of securities law. Go kind of break that apart and sell that in pieces. They need to represent they're making a singular loan to the county, and it's not an offering of securities.
If I could add, um, the Economic Development Authority Board met on the 13th and approved the resolution for their part of this. Just to make that clear, I think Ms. Lackey indicated that they were going to meet, but they already have met.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions for them? Okay. Do we need a motion to accept this resolution?
Yes, I would recommend a roll call vote.
Okay.
Move to adopt the resolution of the Board Supervisors of the County of King George, Virginia, 2022 courthouse financing as presented.
Second.
You have a motion properly seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none? Spender, by roll call vote, please.
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Motion passes.
The second item is a resolution for the radio system contract financing. This is as presented in the agenda. There have been no changes to that resolution. Uh, the details were presented at the last board meeting, October 4th. Same amount, 12,150,000. The interest rate is slightly less at 3.59%, and that's because it's a 15-year term rather than a 20-year term. This is slightly different in the, in addition to the moral obligation pledge. So we are pledging that, subject to appropriations, you will be paying back the, the loan amount. Uh, there's also a, um, purchase agreement whereby Webster Bank becomes the lesssee of the radio equipment to the county. So in the event of a default, other than there, a lack of appropriations, um, they could have recourse to the actual physical equipment. The proposed resolution authorizes the county administrator to finalize the required documents as specified in the resolution to complete the financing. Uh, that includes an escrow agreement for payments on the contract. As you've just heard Sheriff Giles say, it's a fairly long-term project, so payments are going to be due in different increments. So the loan amount will go to an escrow account and payments will flow from the escrow account to the contractor while those lease payments become due by the county to Webster Bank. The only legal comments I had on the backup documents, again, similar to the other, they're, I would say they're of a fairly minor nature that I think will be easily agreed to with the bank. They just relate to, um, an ability of the county to replace equipment if, if, for whatever reason, it becomes damaged or destroyed. And also that attorney's fees be removed or adjusted in the event that they need to try and collect attorney's fees. And additionally, staff is confirming some insurance provisions because, as you're aware, the radio system will be used by sheriff's office, school board, some other users. So we just want to make sure we're using the right language as to who is actually going to insure all of the equipment. And again, um, bond counsel and the county's financial consultant are also available for questions.
Any questions, anyone?
I apologize. Am I missing in the board packet? I don't have this in my board packet, and I don't have it printed up either.
Mr. Chairman, question for maybe the financial guys in the meantime? So they speak of insurance for the system? Are they insuring the system or the, are they insuring the replacement of faulty parts? What's, what's the insurance? And who's carrying the insurance? The county, the schools, or some other entity?
Uh, so I'll, on your second question, I'll, I'll defer to, to the county administrator or county attorney. But, um, it, it's basically insurance that, that you're carrying, similar to if you have a home and a mortgage, or if you have, maybe you've leased or bought a car, and there's a requirement that you have insurance on that. So if something happens to the home, it burns down, there's a problem, um, there's insurance proceeds to basically rebuild and/or pay off the loan. It's a similar concept whereby, um, you're insuring the, the equipment and the various components of the radio so that if there's a problem in the future, something's damaged, destroyed, et cetera, there's insurance that will, you know, basically provide replacement that way. It's not necessarily, and Mr. Bausch can correct me if I'm wrong, it's not a, it's not a warranty in that way, but it's, it's more so because that equipment is serving as the, the collateral and the, the, uh, you know, sort of underlying collateral for the loan. If something happens to it, um, then the insurance company then provides those funds to help kind of replace it and continue it's a fully operational, functional system into the future.
So do you know who's carrying the insurance on it?
Uh, it would, maybe Ms. Lackey. I mean, the county would carry the insurance, not the bank.
I see, I see Mrs. Hawn, Mrs. Hawn's jumping out of her chair to answer that question. So I'll defer to her on that one.
Well, we'll defer to the real expert there.
This is insured, the current radio system that we have is insured with our insurance company, which is VACOR. Um, the current radio system is insured for $873,000. That's how much it, um, is estimated at at this time. Uh, it's classified as inland marine on our insurance policy. And on our current system, Motorola is listed as the additional insured. But, um, Megan Pitts, our procurement manager, has reached out to VACOR and let them know that we're going to be replacing the system and how much the new system is going to cost. And to get that, find out at what point we add that to our insurance. She has sent them an email. She hasn't received it back. But once we get that back and we can insure the system, uh, Webster Bank will be listed as an additional insured on that.
But we don't know how much the insurance is going to cost?
Not at this time. But, um, and I don't have the amount that it costs for our inland marine right here in front of me either. Um, but we're, you know, we're already have one system that is insured, and we will be insuring the next one.
One system's insured for 835,000.
873,000.
And another will be insured for 12 million.
And this is because it, the system that's in has depreciated over time. I'm sure at the time that it was originally built, it was insured at a higher cost. I can check into that. But, um, right now, we don't have the, the cost for the insurance.
We'll need that for, line on for the budget.
That's correct, yes.
So I'm curious what, what we're agreeing to there. The, um, I'm not sure if this is for which one, but the, you mentioned there's a lien on the tower from Webster? Is that what I understood?
Whenever you have an insurance and you have somebody financing something, it's not that they have a lien. It's what you call an additional insured. We, anybody who does work for the county, we have to, they provide us their certificate of insurance with us named as their additional insured so that anything happens. So here we list the, the lien holder as the additional insured.
One more? So I didn't understand the part about the attorney's fees would be waived. Can you re-explain that, please?
So, um, as is common in financing, we actually engage bond counsel. And, um, bond counsel is, is acting, um, on behalf of, of the county for, with regard to the transaction. So there are, there are fees and expenses associated with the financing that are built into the amount that's being financed to cover those, the cost, the cost of the escrow agreement and the, the agent, it's going to be the escrow, um, agent, things of that nature.
Did I understand when you said that, um, um, future attorney's fees from the company of?
Oh, yes, I understand. So, um, uh, in recourse, there's, there's language that says that in the event of defaults and things like that, that they can recover their attorney's fees. Normally, we strike that language so that, I'm still working to get that language either removed or to have it qualified by if they prevail in litigation.
But that's not, that's not ironed out?
Uh, that language, we're waiting to hear back from the bank on that particular language.
Thank you.
We have, um, the form of the escrow, sometimes there's kind of a third-party escrow. Sometimes the bank itself acts as, as the escrow agent. Um, so the form that we are working from, it's just based on the language that was in there, was based on a, a form of another deal where we had that. Um, so I think we're, we're working with them to kind of get a new form of escrow agreement from them, and so we'll see what they have there. Sometimes if there's a third-party escrow agent, they will require that you cover everything under the sun because they don't have any kind of control over either of the parties. Um, here, where it's the bank is really also acting as the escrow agent, we have, I think we have some more flexibility to work through those issues. So I think it should be, it should work out.
And I, I do apologize. It doesn't look like it made it into the published agenda. So we're getting copies, and I'm going to have you all send a digital copy of those that have this so we can, um, maybe pause on that item and I can continue with my other items if, if the, the board will indulge me to, to move on to some of the other items I have.
Is something that we can take care of at the next meeting if it needs to be in the agenda or?
Uh, I believe you need to take care of it tonight. And so what we're asking is, is that if you can just pause this item and bring it back. Um, you know, again, we apologize. I think, you know, we, it was, the, the bulk of this was presented to you at the October 4th meeting, but then we had some other cleanup that we had to do. And unfortunately, these items didn't make it in your agenda. My, my apologies.
Okay. If they're going to get hard copies and bring them down, it's fine. If you want to move on to your next stuff, we'll come back to it.
Okay. So I do have, um, some other updates. The first being that Assistant County Attorney Jessica Washington passed the Virginia Bar Exam, uh, which is a great achievement. She just got her results on Friday, so we're very, very pleased and proud of her. An additional item is that we received a notice through Community Development that the Caroline County Planning Commission is holding a public hearing on Thursday, October 27th, um, to consider a request for a modification of a special exception permit that would remove a buffer. Um, under law, if the certain properties are within proximity to another jurisdiction, they have to give notice. So that's the reason for that notice. Um, Community Development has not seen a problem with this, but I did want to, um, make it known to members of the public as well as to the board that that action is proceeding. The applicant is Mid-Atlantic Materials. The property address is 18173 Tidewater Trail, Port Royal. And the application number is SPEX 042022, for anyone who wants to look that up on the Caroline County Planning Commission Agenda for October 27th. At the October 5th work session, I was asked to give an overview of methodology for the assessment of the taxation of motor vehicles. Um, as many or all of you may be aware that due to supply chain constraints and inflation, unlike most years where your vehicle value goes down, in many cases, vehicle values have been going up, um, resulting in some kind of unwelcome surprises to our taxpayers. And they're, for good reason, they're having questions. Um, Virginia Code, Section 58.1, 3503, Section A, Subpart 3, provides that automobile assessments are to be made by a quote, "recognized pricing guide." And then there is an option of either using all pricing guide adjustments on an individual vehicle basis or simply the base value, which the code specifically says may be average retail, wholesale, or loan value. So that has generated some questions. The King George Commissioner of Revenue uses the National Automobile Dealers Association Pricing Guide, also referred to as NADA, N-A-D-A, that's issued by J.D. Power annually. And they use the valuation of quote-unquote "clean" loan value. So that has kind of raised the question of maybe they should use a different valuation method. The, the laws of taxation require that you tax all property uniformly. So it's, it's very important that the commissioner does use a consistent value. And for that reason, she uses the clean loan in, the clean loan value. The NADA guide does have trade-in values for other conditions, which include average and rough. Um, I did a little bit of research on my own, and this is me, of course, speaking based on my research and not anything, um, that the commissioner has provided. But the NADA guide, use of average loan value is, um, the research shows that the average value is, is the term that was previously used for what is now clean. So my reference for that, and for those who are interested in following up on that, the 2021 Kentucky Department of Revenue's Assessment vehicle basis or simply the base value, which the code specifically says may be average retail, wholesale, or loan value. So that has generated some questions. The King George Commissioner of Revenue uses the National Automobile Dealers Association Pricing Guide, also referred to as NADA, N-A-D-A, that's issued by J.D. Power annually. And they use the valuation of quote-unquote "clean" loan value. So that has kind of raised the question of maybe they should use a different valuation method. The laws of taxation require that you tax all property uniformly, so it's, it's very important that the commissioner does use a consistent value. And for that reason, she uses the clean loan in, the clean loan value. The NADA guide does have trade-in values for other conditions, which include average and rough. I did a little bit of research on my own, and this is me, of course, speaking based on my research and not anything that the commissioner has provided, but the NADA guide use of average loan value is, the research shows that the average value is, is the term that was previously used for what is now clean. So my reference for that, and for those who are interested in following up on that, the 2021 Kentucky Department of Revenue's Assessment of Motor Vehicles Manual, that was the state that I found that had the most information about their taxation methods, but it does relate to all states that do use pricing guides. It provides specific examples, I believe it cites to a 1995 JD Power NADA pricing guide. It shows that the exact same values that are currently referred to as clean are what were formerly referred to as average. So to the extent that that gives anybody any comfort, that there has not been a change in valuation, that that's consistent. And based on looking at the published practices of many of the commissioners throughout the state, it appears that folks are using clean value. Now, Virginia Code Section 58.1, 3503B, as mentioned during the work session, does allow the taxpayer to request that the commissioner take into account the condition of a vehicle. And the manner in which that is conducted in King George County is that a appeal of the tax assessed value can be made to the Commissioner of Revenue. Now, for purposes of background information for the board and to the public, your tax value is established on January 1st. So if your vehicle has damage or conditions that arise after January 1st, those would not be eligible to submit to the Commissioner of Revenue. But if someone does feel that the condition of their vehicle warrants some kind of adjustment, they can appeal to the Commissioner of Revenue. And information that could be submitted, as an example, would be, you know, possibly quotes for what the repair of that vehicle is going to be. And then again, you would only be entitled possibly to a reduction based on condition if you don't intend to get those repairs done. So if you're getting your repairs done within the same year, you're not entitled to a reduction of your tax assessed value. But that gives you some idea of the complexities and the involvement of how the vehicle valuations are made for tax purposes. For those who did not, or were not able to listen in on the October 5th work session, the Board of Supervisors did direct that I proceed with advertising a notice of public hearing for the November 1st board meeting that will allow potentially for the adoption of an ordinance for a credit for motor vehicle taxes for personal vehicles in a future year in the event of a surplus. A surplus would have to be determined on revenue that is expected from personal property taxes. And at this point in time, we do not yet know if there is a surplus, but it's additional tool that the board would have if that ordinance is adopted on November 1st. So folks that are tracking that issue might want to participate in the public hearing on November 1st. And I, if there, I have a few, few other small items, but if there's, I'll pause in case there's any questions on that.
Any questions for Mrs. Lackey so far? I don't think so.
The item that Ms. Bender mentioned in her report is that, and as the board is aware, the Historical Society has requested that they be allowed to continue to use the museum space. Now, I will need to be, respond to some of the provisions that they have placed in the MOU, so I'm not yet prepared to make a recommendation on the MOU. And in fact, we might want to use a vehicle other than an MOU such as a lease because it is real property, presumably it would be for a fairly long duration. But given the, the long-term usage by the Historical Society of the museum space, given their efforts to reestablish their corporate nonprofit status, and given the board's comments that as long as they're not displaying anything in the windows, their, their uses, as they have been conducting themselves in the past, are largely compatible with other uses in the courthouse. If there is an interest on, on part of the board, we could explore a license agreement or some kind of, kind of short-term use basis to let the Historical Society reengage in use of that space while we negotiate the terms of either an MOU or a lease agreement. So that's just one option if the board wanted to consider on a temporary basis granting a license for the Historical Society to resume use of that space.
Any questions on that?
Yes, I know that's a lot to take in for tonight. So if, if folks are not interested in making a vote tonight, I would request that it be put on the November 1st meeting because I know they are a big part of our Christmas tree lighting. And they made over, I think Ms. Parker can confirm, almost $1,000 selling the merchandise, the books, the pottery, the ornaments. And to be, and they donated hot chocolate, a lot was a big hit last year, and they want to do it again at the Christmas tree lighting. But there's a lot of interest in the community of getting back in there and doing research and genealogy and all that, so.
May I ask a question, Mr. Chair? Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Lackey, so what would this license agreement look like? Like if we were to direct you to draft that, because obviously that hasn't been drafted yet, but that's possibly your suggestion. So would you execute that, or would, would you go ahead and draft it, negotiate it with them, and bring it back to us November 1st? What's the timetable on this?
Yes, so I think that if we wanted to, to formalize the terms and allow additional input, I, I think I'm, I'm hearing at least from Supervisor Bender that I could prepare a license agreement and have it included in your agenda package for your November 1st meeting for consideration. And the thought would be that it would be a, a temporary arrangement until, you know, more extensive terms perhaps, or just give the Historical Society sometimes to kind of regain their, their feet. They're still trying to reestablish their nonprofit status. So there's, there's a few things and a few reasons, I think, that would give cause to have a temporary agreement to be followed, hopefully shortly thereafter, by a longer-term arrangement.
Thank you. With that, I would like to, I would like to see if there's consensus of the board to direct the county attorney to develop this temporary agreement to bring it back to us so that we can get the museum open sooner rather than later.
Ms. Collins? Ms. Lackey, if you would move forward and have that for us for the next meeting?
Great, thank you very much. So I believe before you all now, should, you should have a hard copy of the resolution to approve the radio system lease financing. As described earlier in the meeting, this is consistent with what was presented at the October 4th meeting with regard to the, the amount of the, the amount to be financed, the purpose to be financed, the term. There's just reference to the documents that would need to be authorized to proceed
And I'm, I'm happy to walk through super fast. I think I deserve an award, as this might be one of my shortest resolutions ever, so good, good for this. But this is a pretty simple resolution that's just approving this, the equipment lease financing that the county attorney has described. You can see the whereas, as we talk kind of pretty simply about what the equipment is, who the bank is, what the amount is. The first paragraph really walks through the parameters of that deal, which is what you guys are already familiar with, a 15-year deal at the 359, at the 12, 150, not to exceed. So that's really the meat of it. The later paragraphs, Paragraph 2 talks about this is really a moral obligation to county, it's not a legal debt, with the understanding as described that, you know, if, if the county was to walk away from the system and not make payments, then the bank has a right to basically take the radio system. That's really their security that they're looking for. There's no real practical thinking that that's something that would ever happen, but that's the security that they have so they can make this loan. The later paragraphs, Paragraphs 3, 4, and 5 really talk about tax-related questions, and that's kind of where we come in, where we're delivering in a bond opinion that basically says this can be done as a tax-exempt debt. And so this is basically just the county recognizing that this is a system that's going to be used for public purposes. It's not going to be sold or leased to some private entity to operate, it's really for, for governmental purposes. So that's really, 3, 4, and 5 really just are tracking those kind of requirements, which we get into in the documents. The later documents, or the later paragraphs really are just talking about, Paragraph 7 is where we kind of get into authorizing all the other kind of related documents. We, we're going to have in this deal an escrow agreement, but there's similar agreements that might have to kind of follow on with the main agreement. And that's just authorizing, authorizing execution and negotiation of the rest of those. And then Paragraph 8 just is kind of reiterating what we did earlier, which says this is a moral obligation pledge, this is not debt for any kind of statutory or constitutional purposes. So if there's any questions, but I think that's hopefully a quick summary of all the provisions. Thank you.
Just a quick reading it over, I'm, who's the lease with?
Mr. Collins, this is also with Webster Bank. So Webster is the, the lender for both the courthouse and for the radio system.
There's nothing in here that says Webster Bank is the lease with.
Right there on the first page.
Okay, got it. Thanks.
I'll move adoption of the resolution of the Board of Supervisors of the County of King George, Virginia, approving radio system lease financing as presented. And can we ensure that this is entered into the record of the meeting, please?
Second. All right, we have a motion properly seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, go by roll call, please. Ms. Bender?
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Motion passes. Anything else, Ms. Lackey?
That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Moving along, presentations and reports. First up, King George Social Services Annual Report Presentation by Mr. Franklin. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My vice chair Renee Parker's here for moral support, but not going to join me at the podium. So typically, you only see me when we're talking money, usually asking for money. I do not come asking for anything tonight, hopefully just sharing good news and information about where we've been. This is an annual report, but I think it's probably your first-ever annual report. I've been in the position for two years now, as of November 2nd, so coming up on two years. And it was about towards the end of my first year that I was instructed by a seasoned director that I was supposed to do this. And there is no instruction manual for, for a new director, so I bring you the first-ever annual report. And I do so out of obligation by code, but more so out of really excitement to share with you where we've been and where we're going. We're gonna, I promise not to read all of the slides. So I am very grateful for the members of my board, which now is fully staffed, thanks to the motion of Ms. Cupka this evening, and you're adopting that motion. This is the first time ever in a long time, we've been, had a full, fully-staffed board. And our latest additions, most recently are Ms. Lisa Pitts and Edwin Frank, I think frequently known as Sergeant Major Frank. So they are, they are learning much about the, the many things that, that happen in each one of our units. I'm also very grateful to my management team, I owe them everything for the, the day-to-day operations that I certainly could not do myself. This is a snapshot of all of our current positions. If you remember two years ago, at my first budget presentation, budget request, I asked for three positions and you granted them. I am grateful, we are using them. And we are, because of that, we are able to cross-train in our programs and have backups and support. And it has really clarified, we've spent the last several years clarifying our direct reports, we are creating senior workers, and, and really able to streamline our business practices. So some of the new things that we've, we've really focused on this last year, if you were not able to attend, back in April, we had our first family day. This was our attempt to get out of the basement where we are housed. We are essentially invisible to much of the, the citizens of our county, both physically, we are housed in a basement, we've been there since the late 70s. And then also, our, our program is often, our programs are often invisible because what we do is confidential. A lot of people feel shame when they come asking for the assistance that we provide. There is no shame in our programming, that is what it is here for. And so with the help of Mr. Clark in Parks and Rec, the athletic director at King George High School, partnering up with KGYAA flag football, we put on an event that was a massive success. And I have full intention on bringing that back this year, bigger and better. I'm not trying to rival the Fall Festival, but I'm willing to give it a shot. We need something big for the spring. We had 32 vendors, food trucks, demonstrations by first responders, a mixture of agencies sharing their programming and interacting with citizens, as well as just a good time for people. And all, every takeaway that I heard was that it was, it was a success and they wanted to do it again, including my staff who volunteered their Saturday for that. We are trying to engage our churches through the Care Portal. I learned of this through Andy Crawford, who's director out in Bedford. He's the president of our, our Professional League of Directors, or was the, the previous president. We have 26 churches and counting in King George, who are very generous, who have great hearts, who contribute in our holiday seasons and throughout the year. And we are looking to use the Care Portal to engage them with direct services and contact with the families of our county, specifically to address and prevent children from coming into foster care. So whether it's a family sleeping in a car, and yes, we have families sleeping in vehicles, or a family facing eviction, or substance abuse, or clothing needs, or transportation issues, this is our way of connecting with churches and, and in, in my opinion, to help address some of the duplication of services that we see. Oftentimes, we have churches that don't know what each other are doing. We don't know what each individual church is providing. We know that they all provide some form of mercy fund or ministry and want to serve the community. So this is a way that we can directly connect them to families, and hopefully, we can step out of the way and let the community serve itself. This is a growing program. We initiate, we kicked off in late April. We currently have three churches. The summertime was a very slow time of growth for, for this program, so we are trying to reengage those. But we are currently teaming up with even churches in Fredericksburg in Spotsylvania. Grace Community Church has been one, New Life in Christ Church out by Spotsylvania, Town Center, have all contributed, and that number of donations so far, it has increased since the creation of this slide. So I am, I'm very eager to grow this program because I know the churches, they're already doing the work, and this is a way that we can, we can help centralize some of their ministries, should they desire to be a part of it. And essentially, one important fact is, we fronted the, the cost of the administrative portion of this program. It was just under $3,000. We have already recovered that in the economic impact that has already been provided. And I'm hoping if we can do anything remotely close to what Bedford County is doing, they have hundreds of thousands of dollars that they are pumping into their community. We are doing our very first strategic plan as an agency. We have a consultant, she is fantastic. We've had our first two planning sessions. We are also doing focus groups. The first one was- The first one was involved community partners and agencies, so all of our departments and agencies that we work with and depend on, they attended or were at least invited to attend. We had a customer focus group and customers identified who were even incentivized with a gift card. We had no one show up. So I think that speaks volumes towards our our customer engagement, even though they didn't say anything, that in and of itself says plenty. And then we're also doing staff and board member focus groups so that we can hear from them and really set out, not to hear where we are now, but really set the stage for where we are going and have some clear action items on the table for the next three years. We have created a fraud position. We were able to move some caseloads around and with the addition of that new position that we had two years ago, we're able to unload one person and now have someone who can dedicate time to fraud. Fraud has always been there. It is always an initiative of the state. We've always had to respond to fraud complaints, but we've never had anyone dedicated, fully trained, really focusing on educating the public on what their responsibilities are and then holding people accountable and and reclaiming funds that should not have been provided to them. So I am very pleased to have that program up and running. Continuous quality improvement is a state initiative that I intend to make a local priority. This is the state's desire to be data driven and follow trends in, that are state trends, program trends that impact children in foster care. The state has implemented this, focusing on congregate care placements, which are children placed in residential facilities and group homes, all of which we want out of those facilities. Those are not long term placements. Those are not, that's not permanency for them. Kinship placements, so how can we better engage families and place children with their kin, or what the state calls fictive kin? People who may not be blood relatives but act as relatives in some sort. And then our protection and in-home services. What are the barriers to our response times or or various other measures that we have? I hope that we can broaden this to all of our programs, to our benefits and to our services, and that we can really shape our local processes to be not only efficient, but to cater to the needs and the trends that we see in our county, which since I started here in 2005 doing foster care casework, our trends are very, very different. Our our caseloads are very different, our demographics and our needs are very different. And this is how we can address those with numbers to show, show you. We had a board retreat. So as a new director, I had countless unknowns and lots of questions and was part of a mentor program that the state offered. I looked out and and was selected for that. And my mentor put me in connection with a retired director, Rick Verilla, and I don't know if anyone in the room or online remembers, back in 1986 or 91, he started his directorship with King George DSS and then moved on to Campbell County and then retired from York Park Osten. He was a gem to have. He did it free of charge, just out of the goodness of his heart and the care for me and the care of our DSS board. He helped us and helped me understand our complex budget. We juggled two budgets, the state and the local budget, which never match up, either the numbers or the dates. He helped us to understand how we can better advocate for our programs, how the board can directly be involved, and how we can advocate to you all and and better to educate you all on on what is going on. It was a, it was a true godsend to have his work and his dedication for us. And he set the stage for our strategic plan. We also had a financial review with auditors that you're very well familiar with, Robinson Farmer Cox and Associates. They reviewed, this was not part of our standard audit. This was an extra where they were looking at our policies, our procedures, our practices, our safeguards. And we, when I wrote this slide, we did not have the report. We do now have the report. I have a lot of work to do, along with my management team, especially my office manager, to craft a lot of policies. They found no issues or errors in in our policies or practices. They gave us some basic recommendations that we were able to implement just in our interviews with them. But in the report, they have drafted clear policies that we just need to craft where we can implement some safeguards, some segregation of duties, and then really document how we are doing our our financial practices, really to clean up shop. Telework is is here to stay for us. We do not have anyone exclusively teleworking, and I think much of our our staff really appreciate the camaraderie that we have in the office. But COVID has taught us that we have to bend to a new workforce, workforce demands and workforce incentives. I can tell you that telework was allow, allowed us to steal a gem of an employee from the city of Fredericksburg, that in proximity to to her home. So I, I kind of hang that over my colleague in Fredericksburg's head, but I think she's also my competition as well. But this is a management learning curve for us. I am indebted to the IT support of the state that is not always superb, but recently has really come through to us as we're able to to meet this new, new generation of the workforce. I talked about developing staff. Really, my challenge for our our employees is to not settle in their positions, to to always aspire to grow, even if that, and I've even told this in our staff meetings, even if that means I'm growing them out of our agency into somewhere else for a supervisory I don't just want to grow in employees, I want growing employees. And so we have, we are in the developing stage of succession planning, identifying who our, our, our star performers are, who who we need to gear up to be promoted. This is something our agency has never had. I've been there since February 2nd, or yeah, February 2nd of 2005, and there was never a clear growth path, career path. So we are developing that. So here are the numbers, and these are a lot of numbers, but I want to direct your attention to to the real bottom line. So this column right here that says local, that's what I monitor all the time. That's what you guys should be monitoring. This is what money is coming out of the county. What does that mean? So for, when it look, when we look at administrative costs, the county contribution for staff and operations is half million dollars. The feds and the state take care of the rest. There are some non-reimbursables that have to do with some of the financial processes that the county provides. But then this is the bulk of the economic impact in our county. These are all of our programming dollars, our benefits that that keep families going. And when you come down to the, the, these bottom lines, the total social services spending, and I forgot the caveat, this is old news. I was hoping to have the FY 2022 fiscal information that has not been released. So this is, this is somewhat old news, but our, our financial trends have not shifted much since 2021. And so total local spending was a little over one and a half million dollars, but overall, all sources, $45 million. That's what I would call bang for your buck. That is economic impact. The the bulk of the literature out there says that SNAP spending is revenue back into the local community. That is federal dollars that stream into our local grocery stores and our, our convenience So that's a snapshot of our, our budget. More to come on that when we start those conversations in a month or two. So here, here are some, this is some, some of our performance and caseload information, what we do. These are, these are our benefit programs. So we have SNAP, which is food stamps, Medicaid, TANF, childcare, fuel, crisis and cooling. Fuel, crisis and cooling are our energy assistance programs, and they're seasonal. SNAP and Medicaid are the bulk of our, our work in the benefits programs, and we see those applications rising somewhat. It will be very interesting to see when the federal government ends our public health emergency, the Medicaid caseloads are going to plummet because many people are going to be removed because we currently cannot remove since the beginning of the COVID pandemic, have not been able to remove anybody from from Medicaid, whether their finances have changed or not. That's going to mean, what I told my board last night, that's going to mean those people who are immediately dropped are going to reapply. And those are all applications that have to be processed by my workers. We have not wrapped our, our brain around how we're going to do that. We are working on that with the state. The state does not have a full game plan, but we are gearing up, most likely sometime beginning of the year, definitely after the, this election cycle. I'm estimating maybe early spring, we will see that health emergency change somewhat and impact our programming. The smaller pie graph is our case counts. This is only one month. I can't give you a case count. It's hard to get the data because it changes month to month, but that's a standard month, and that's kind of end of the fiscal year in the month of June. And you see Medicaid and SNAP being the the two largest pieces of that pie. For family services, the top pie chart is our adult protective services programming. These are all fiscal year numbers. So I have one worker who does all of our adult services for the county, so adult protective services, adult services and guardianships. The bulk of her workload is in those investigations for adult protective services. Below that pie chart is our child protective services cases. The blue are all of our CPS reports, so we had 252. We had an increase in reports. We had a decrease in actually valid cases this year, which was an anomaly. I don't have an explanation for that. I do know we have had, we have had more duplicate referrals. So say a call comes in from a school social worker and a school resource officer, we would only accept one, but that counts as two, two reports. Every call is logged separately for just call integrity. And then, so we had 86 family assessments, 14 investigations. Most of those investigations are usually shared with law enforcement, so they involve some connection with a criminal investigation. And then we prevented 12 kids from coming into foster care. That is a new measure for us this year. I wanted to know, how many kids can we legitimately say did not enter foster care? That is a real number right there. We used to have, at one point, over 40 kids in care. We now, this past year, if you move over to permanency, the blue part, that is a count of 12. And that's over the course of the year. That number is actually now dwindled down to, it's either six or seven, because we had some kids age out, we had some adoptions, we actually had two adoptions this year. We're managing 27 adoption subsidy cases, and we added three new foster families to our permanency rolls. Our CSA program, that is a, a big chunk of our budget that you see. It is a separate budget for us. So we had, two years ago, we exploded that budget and we increased it by a million dollars because we had the Families First Prevention Act, which was a federal law passed on to the state of Virginia. State of Virginia was very slow in initiating that and then finally was told they had to. So they, they scrambled, which made us scramble. And we put together projections to, because we were anticipating some significant increases. This is what that budget looked like in FY 22, so $3.7 million. So the solid case, case projections were $3.4 million. And then we allowed for a buffer, should we have additional special education services, families moving into the county, children shifting into residential placements, which are expensive. The actuals were significantly different. We were, we had several out of state placements that we were paying premium for, meaning in out of state, they didn't accept Medicaid, so we were paying all of the insurance, what the insurance company typically would pay, paying for all of the education, all of, every aspect of those placements. We had several residential placements that we anticipated were going to be there for the long haul, that were not. Let's see. And then we had several just shifts that we did not expect. Children who we thought were going to, we had budgeted for being in residential care, we were able to reunify with family and put them back into their community with their family. We had adoptions, we had people aging out. And so this is what the actuals look like, $2.6 million. And I think that that speaks for itself. So I titled this challenges. I think the better, better thing is opportunities. So the public health emergency is a, continues to be a spur in our saddle every day, especially in our benefit programs. The federal government has limited what we can do in our programs. So for our VIEW program, where we are trying to get citizens who are receiving benefits back to work, to be self-sufficient, contributing to their, their families and really understand and appreciate the value of their dollar. The federal government has, does not allow us to mandate those services. So it's optional, and no one's taking the option, except for one person, and I'll get to that in our second to last slide. It also poses significant barriers for our, our staff to understand the ever-changing policies. And every time there's a policy change in one of our benefit programs, it is a risk of us committing a, a payment error, giving someone benefits when they shouldn't. And that's a risk for us to have to then pay it back. That's a constant juggle. IT, we are looking to, to the future. We are now officially in the cloud, with the exception of our financial system, which is a 1980s, 90s, 80s piece of software. It is not sufficient, it is not satisfactory. Chris Dines would agree with me, he's worked with it. We, we will modernize that in, in the next year or so. I am always whispering in Ms. Han, I think she left, Ms. Han's ear, to be a part of those conversations as she is looking for the new financial system for the county. We want our new financial system to communicate so that we can be in, in the modern world and, and really prevent errors. Every non-automated process is, is, is a risk, in my opinion. Excuse me. Human resources, we are struggling with recruitment and retention, and I'm gonna, I'll, I'll put you on notice now that I am going to request to be before you in November, to talk about some salary issues that we have run into and some vacancies. This is a statewide issue. The state actually has done a huge study, I'm still working through it, to understand the, the workforce dilemma, not only in the health field, but in the child welfare and the public health arena, which we're included. Every local Department of Social Services is, is plagued with these HR woes, but we are working on some solutions and more to come on that. These are some impacts. So this is, this is what our, our case data looks like. We serve, and once again, this is fiscal year 2021, so somewhat old news. But at the time, 5,431 citizens, that's 17%, close to 20%, a fifth of the county walks through our doors or applies online, interacts with us in some degree, which is a significant chunk of, of our constituents. chunk of our constituents. And you can see the, the case data that fluctuates over the years. You see that Medicaid case data rising. So our growing, our impacts, I am continuously trying to network and learn from other people, other agencies, nonprofits. The Fun Day was one way of engaging, but there's also some conversations with an agency or a developing group called the King George Community Alliance, who's trying to link arms and pool resources to centralize the services that we have. Because what we have found over the last couple of years, as I have these conversations, we don't know what each other are doing. And, and that's a shame, it's a loss to each one of our citizens that need us. Our holiday programs serve over 300 families in each holiday program, so Christmas and Thanksgiving, we serve over 300 families. I invite everybody, every department to participate, whether you want to help carry food to cars and, and meet and greet with people while we're, while we're having our distribution days. Or if you want to sponsor families, please reach out to us. We have offered two resource family trainings this year. If I can replace some staff, I hope to do the same this year. That is an ever-present need for us to develop community resources and train foster families. And so I've talked about a lot of programs, data, numbers. None of that means anything without real people, because that is what we're really doing. I don't crunch numbers or look at budgets because I like the numbers. I care about the people, that's what we're here for, that's what our numbers really mean. So this young lady is a single mom and in the midst of COVID, she, she opted for that VIEW program and sought employment, sought training. She worked, she trained, we assisted with transportation needs, with all those things that are constant barriers to people who are ALIS families. And if you don't know that term, I encourage you to know that term, that is the working poor. That is the, that is where my heart bleeds most days, because those are the, those are the families who are on, on the cusp of falling below the poverty level. But they don't meet our SNAP requirements and our Medicaid requirements. And they don't have the resources to pay for their insurance premiums or to fix that car repair. And so that is a goal for me in, in this, this year to come, is to, to figure out how we can locally address those ALIS, those ALIS homes. This, this young lady is now in the workforce. She completed her education, she is working, she is becoming self-sufficient, addressing all of those needs herself that, that we once had to, had to address for her. And then this is my shining star right here. This young man I have known since he was in diapers through Child Protective Services cases. He was in and out of foster care at least three times, so in foster care, return home, in foster care, placement with relative, in foster care. And then has ran the course of every residential facility, many acute facilities in the state of Virginia, placed out of state. I had lost hope for this young man. And he was able to take, in, over the course of a month or two, working with a solid therapist in his out-of-state residential placement that we paid premium for, the light bulb went off for this young man. And he started making changes. He made it out of residential, back to the state of Virginia, to a group home. And he was only in the group home for a matter of months because he went to a community home, to one of our foster homes, and was adopted just before his 18th birthday, literally finalized the month before he turned 18. We don't get those success stories every year. This is a gem of a story. This is, there was a lot of investment in this young man, hours and hours and hours from my staff, traveling out of state, thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars. But now he is adopted with a family, he is in school, he is working as a parent, not as a paramedic, as an EMT. He is, he is doing life now. And he is going to be a very successful young man. I'm very excited to see where he goes in the, in the years to come. And that's us. That's a handful of our staff, right in front of our building, and that's a snapshot from our Family Day tent. That's what I have for our first ever DSS annual report. Do I have any questions?
Any questions from Mr. Franklin?
No, my staff deserves a hand. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I don't have a question, but might make a comment briefly. So I serve on your board and I just want to thank you for doing this. There was a lot of work involved in it and I know it, it wasn't being done before. So this is a big deal that you are here and bringing this to us. And I want to just bring home the point that that one pie chart, you serve 17% of our population here in King George, using only, 4% of that uses our local dollars that our budget funds. The fact that you are able to leverage that much money from federal, state and other maybe nonprofit sources is a tremendous success story. So thank you for what you're doing for our community.
Absolutely. It's a pleasure.
Any other questions, comments?
Just thank you for the presentation, very thorough. And it's nice to see the success stories at the end, so I appreciate that those might not be the norm, but it is exciting and thank you for bringing in and sharing it with us.
Absolutely. And feel free to come and visit us in the basement anytime.
Yeah. I just want to say thank you. That was a lot of information to absorb, but thank you very much.
Absolutely.
I was going to say, Mr. Franklin, thank you for coming, thank you for your presentation, extremely thorough, it was your first one, you know, great job on that. You and I have worked together for a lot of years and you took over an organization that had a lot of issues and been doing a great, great time, great job. And I know a number of people who have been in the program and a lot of the success stories. And like you said, numbers and charts are all that kind of great, but the stories are, is the end goal. That's what is really the best thing. So I just wanted to say thank you very much and to your staff that they work hard and they probably don't get the appreciation and the kudos that, that, that they deserve. So just pass that on to them, just thank you again.
Thank you.
All right, coming up next, the Ralph Bunch Business Plan Update. Sparker, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the board. Just want to thank you again for everything that you're doing to make this project a reality. We have, you're aware that we have several subcommittees in place with the Ralph Bunch Advisory Committee as the overarching committee. And these committees are working very, very hard and are coming up with some great plans. I just want to say something very quickly though, just to let you know that, kind of reiterating what Ms. Jordan said earlier, that this is all the buzz, it is all the buzz. There's a lot of publicity, particularly with the partnership with Jermon Bushrod's organization. So this is a large advisory committee that we have in place and we have members of the community organizations, what have you, that may approach individual committee members in hopes of establishing any kind of an informal or formal or promise of some sort of having a stake in the actual building, if you will. So I just wanted to let you know that in our November meeting, we've asked for an updated schematic of the layout of all the buildings on the property, including the property, so that we can make our committee members, all the committee members, aware of the sections that, you know, have been identified in the letter of intent with Mr. Bushrod. And to kind of assure you, as the owner of the building, that the committee members fully understand that our job really is to assure the community that this is a source to serve, the center will be a source to serve the entire community, that there will be mentorships that are available there, that there will be kitchens, that a kitchen that could be used, meeting areas that can be used, a gymnasium that can be used, but that it's for everybody to, to feel that they can approach and reserve space. So, you know, we're making sure committee members know that we're not really there to promise anything, to make any type of formal or informal relationships with organizations. And if there is anything that committee members receive along the lines of industry, future industry partners or sources like that, we would bring that to the county, certainly. I just wanted to assure you of that. The chair of the Business Plan Committee is Mr. Chris Clark. Shannon Tolliver is here, is also part of the Business Plan Committee. I don't presume to know nearly as much as these two do about the business plan. So they are here to give you, Mr. Clark is going to give you a brief synopsis, certainly not going through the slides that you were emailed, there's 25 of them, on what the business plan is up to and if you have any questions. If you haven't gone through it all and have any questions tonight, please feel free to email anybody on the Business Play Committee or myself and I'll forward the email. Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Also, members of the Business Plan Committee, I understand I'm considering.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board. Tonight I'm happy to bring you an update on the Ralph Bunch Advisory Committee's business plan. Originally submitted as part of the Industrial Revitalization Fund grant, the plan has been updated since October 4th to include the Visualize and Rise Foundation and the proposed programs and services they will offer. Additionally, we've updated the plan to include the potential relocation of the Virginia Cooperative Extension Office to the center. And as well, we have included estimated annual maintenance and utility costs, which would include a full-time custodian. Those costs were developed, many of those costs were developed off the library and their budget based on the fact that it is a similar sized building. Those costs would be approximately $150,000. On behalf of the committee, we are excited to, at the possibilities that will come with this revitalization project and look forward to the day when Parks and Recreation will operate the facility on behalf of the county and its partners. As we said earlier, we've got three members, well, actually we have five members of the Business Plan Committee here, seven members of the committee in general, the overall committee, and we are happy to answer any questions. Well, Shannon has something specifically she wants to say about Visualize and Rise. Oh, the other thing is we will be, the business plan that you all got by email, now that we have presented it to you formally, it will be added. I will welcome Mr. Dines to getting that added to the RBAC website in the coming days.
Any questions, anyone? Questions, comments?
Just a quick comment. I want to note, are we still on track for the roof next week? The date that Ms. Bender and I were provided last week was October 24, 25. I know the materials have been delivered to the site, they were delivered last week.
That's my understanding, yes.
Time to raise the roof. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Clark, and thank you, everyone. All right, moving into action items. Department of Parks and Rec, VDOT Ready/Set/Go Transportation Alternatives Grant Program.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tonight I bring you a brief presentation on the Virginia Department of Transportation's Ready/Set/Go Transportation Alternatives Grant Program. And we'll request action to approve staff applying for this program. As we discussed previously, King George County has shown the need and desire for multimodal transportation improvements through a number of instruments. These include the King George County Trailway Study, the King George Washington Regional Commission's Greenways Fusibility Study and Plan, and the King George County Parks and Recreation Needs Assessment. Using these documents as a guide, we are working with GWRC and FAMPO on ranking the needs of the community as part of the Rural Transportation Working Plan and have included these improvements in future years of the Capital Improvement Plan. Last month, we applied for a Safe Routes to School Walkabout Mini Grant for King George Middle School. Unfortunately, we learned last week that we were not selected in this round. The Ready/Set/Go Transportation Alternatives Grant is a pilot program designed to assist localities with smaller populations in identifying, evaluating and reporting achievable, affordable and targeted non-motorized improvements. If selected, a consultant-led team will assist staff with preparing for the upcoming FY '25, '26 Transportation Alternatives application that opens in the spring of 2023. The proposed project for submission is the, is from the King George County Trailways Fusibility Study, project number three, the construction of bike lanes and sidewalks on both sides of Route 3 from Madison Drive, Presidential Lakes, to Tins Blue Mill Lane, Project Faith. The thing is, we do have a condensed deadline. We, it actually is a very simple application, there's not a whole lot of things. And I have discussed with Mrs. Cook in Economic Development Tourism that we are ready to attack this, as she is our certified VDOT applications person. But through VDOT's assistance, we hope to acquire the data that will allow us to successfully apply for this funding and make this highly traveled section of King's Highway that includes both residential and commercial development, more friendly to bicycle and pedestrian traffic. I recommend that the board authorize staff to apply for the Ready/Set/Go program for this project as presented.
Any questions for Mr. Clark or anything?
Yes, sir. Mr. Clark, thank you for the presentation. Three days is quick, so I was going to ask, but you're confident that you can get it done?
Yes, it's actually a very simple application.
Is there any match, anything along those lines, or is...
Transportation alternatives, why I bring this. And this is where I'm not as familiar, unfortunately, someday, Miss Cupkin may be able to answer because she has gone down this road before in her previous employment.
So, may I, Mr. Chair? So I took a look at the application on the VDOT website and it appears as though this deadline for Friday is to help us identify and evaluate and prepare, it says, for their potential transportation alternatives application. So this does not look like, this has a local match. This is like a pre, a study, you know, you need a study, a planning study, a planning study to do a grant application nowadays, everything you need a study. So this is like the study that gets you in the door to do a bigger grant application that will have a local match, 20 or 25%.
But, but it doesn't obligate us to move forward, absolutely. Like if, it's not saying then that we would have to do it if...
It just says...
The hope is that we would be prepared to present it. One of the things, why it's designed this way, it's designed for localities under 50,000 and they have a separate category with under 10,000, maybe? Maybe, I may be coming up the wrong number, but it's supposed to, because we don't have these abilities to come up with good, solid applications like our, like our bigger brothers do that are in NPOs. So this is to help us really come up with a solid application to hopefully move forward on some of these multimodal projects that we desperately need. I mean, every day I stand in my office and watch folks walk up and down King's Highway from Food Lion or from the schools and it's dangerous. They really, we really need some separated lanes.
Understood. I appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah, they're calling this a TA pre-application. And then the other thing is called a TA full application. And the full application requires a board resolution of support. Yep.
Mr. Chair, I just have a quick question. It's a great idea. Is, are we able to do this by using the existing roads and sidewalks and not have to?
That's what they would help us develop.
Okay. The whole plan of how to do it.
Yeah, and whether it becomes divided or on-road bike lanes and how we, how we work through all that, that's, it's going to give us, essentially it's going to give us a transportation planner to help us figure this out, when right now our transportation planners are an economic development director, an economic development specialist and a Parks and Rec director who don't know a whole lot about transportation.
That's where I was going, is we're a small locale that can't afford one like the bigger ones, and so this is helpful. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I moved authorized staff to apply for the Ready/Set/Go Transportation Alternative Grant Program.
Second.
Have your motion properly seconded? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Collins, did you vote? Okay, I didn't hear you. Chair votes aye, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Thank you.
1013, Department of Economic Development and Tourism Resolution in Support of the Virginia American 250 Commission. Mr. Minor?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. The Virginia American Revolution Commission was created by the General Assembly for the purpose of planning for and commemorating the 250th anniversary of Virginia's participating in the American Revolution, the Revolutionary War, and the formation of this nation. Localities have been encouraged to form local committees to begin planning for this statewide event with the culmination of events occurring from 2022 to 2026. The Northern Neck Tourism Commission has formed a regional committee, which includes organizations such as George Washington's Birthplace, the Rappahannock Tribe, Stratford Hall, Menocan, and the A.T. Johnson High School Museum, and has invited King George County to participate with their planning efforts. A designee of the Board's choosing will represent the county and participate in planning meetings for the multi-year commemoration. The tack recommends that the Board of Supervisors designate the Director of Economic Development Tourism as the county's designee and support the resolution as to join the Northern Neck Virginia American Revolution 250th Commission. Staff agrees with tax recommendations.
Any questions for Mr. Minor?
Mr. Chair, sorry, I do have one question. I read up a little bit about this. Is this something that might, if we do this, allow us BTC grant opportunities possibly? Do you know if they're doing anything like that?
Yes, ma'am. So if you are regionally formed, we can apply for the DRIVE 2.0, essentially annually, since that's how they run that program. And then BTC has rolling degrees of grant money that comes out as funds become available, so I'm sure there'll be opportunities. And that's the other part of this. I wouldn't want to miss out on that, on those grant dollars for tourism if they come available.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mine was more of a procedural question. If we were to move forward, would it need to be two different motions, one to appoint the designee and another to adopt the resolution? And it doesn't matter what order we would do them in?
I think it would be wise to do two separate, but I don't, I don't think the order matters.
Okay, thank you. I move to designate the Director of Economic Development and Tourism as the county designee to the Northern Neck Virginia American Revolution 250th Commission.
Second.
Do you have a motion properly seconded? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes.
I move to adopt the resolution of support for the Virginia America 250 Commission as presented.
Second.
Motion properly seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Minor. All right, no discussion items. Mr. Miller?
All right. Just wanted to, at your desks, you do have an updated to-do list, and as you can see, we have backloaded all of the completed items in yellow, and we will keep those as per your direction. I did add some different looks to this, and that is to add in, in red, new items that pertain to ongoing projects. So for instance, the personal property tax ordinance revisions, the proposal is obviously, a public hearing will be held on the first of November for institution of a refund program for the personal property tax, and then also working on implementation of the pro-rata provision of the personal property tax. So you'll see going forward, any kind of additions or modifications to any of these ongoing projects. We'll have updates that way as well. So there any questions on the to-do list, let me know. If there's anything that you need to add, I am going to add the Historical Society License Agreement. I think that would be something that would hopefully go right to yellow, because we'll get completed, but that will be something that we will obviously be dealing with. The other item, a couple other items on there, Board Goal Setting Meeting, I know that's one of the, those, so that is an item that's added as a, that we'll be tracking. Like, you all indicated that you wanted to do that at some point in time. I would propose something in January. If you want to do it earlier, we run into holiday issues, so I don't know that you want to do it before the end of the calendar year, but sometime after January, or into January. What I would like to do is, at one of the meetings in November, I'll provide you with what I would recommend, a possible process of doing this. But I'm certainly open to whatever ideas you all have or directions you want to give. But I know we wanted to get something kind of on a calendar, at least on your planning horizon. Public Information Officer position, I think that, I know that we sent out an email that had a job description, and we had asked you for some comments. If you haven't made any comments, it's okay. But if you do have any and you want to get them to Lauren Petruski, then what we'll do is, we'll mark up any of the job description according to whatever comments we got. We haven't really gotten any many comments. We did send it to all of our department heads, and again, what I have mentioned is, my goal is that this position is a, is a resource to, to you all as, as board members, but also will be a resource to all of the departments. It's not meant to be just exclusively in my domain. It would be coordinated by, by me and would answer to, that position would answer to me, but it would be certainly at the, at the usage of, of you all as, as board members and, and some of our other officials. So, Holiday Luncheon, the schedule is the 8th of December, that, that'll be at the Convenience Center, again, if, if Mr. Clark is so inclined.
Citizen Center?
Citizen Center. Convenience Center would be fine, too. You know, you might have more room there, and you can get rid of the, and you can get rid of your trash a lot easier.
Might be a little cold.
The time is, usually it's like at 11:00 or 11:30, is that right, Chris? Is that? Okay. But it's, it's a nice time for you to be able, if you can make it, to be able to thank our employees and to recognize them. And we'll have, obviously, the two awards, the Employee of the Year or the Making the Difference Award for the employees and the Making a Difference Award for the citizens. So, next page is employee anniversaries and new hires. Oh, wow, I'm not going to go through all those. But you can see, we do have a number of, Mr. Deputy Simmons, 26 years, or Captain Simmons, excuse me. And then we have Mr. O'Connor in groundskeeping, 20 years, all the way down...
He's a lieutenant.
Mr. Miller, it's, he's Lieutenant Simmons, not Captain Simmons.
Hey, I just read these things, so. We just, we got that from the sheriff's office. Maybe, I know.
Maybe Sheriff Giles, he promoted him.
Did you promote him without your knowledge? I'm just kidding you.
Not a chance, not a chance. I love Jimmy, but not a chance.
But that is represent all of the, the folks that have October anniversaries. You can see, we got some new hires in fire and rescue. And that's it.
Mr. Miller, I guess there was just a typo there. Lieutenant Simmons, and then you have Captain Weston.
I thought they were doing, I thought they were interchanging.
Those were two, well, I guess it depends what week. Those two titles were reversed, but congratulations to both of, all of the people up there.
We'll apologize to those two. We don't want to have one jump the other, so. That's it.
All right, any quest?
And Chris Clark, sorry. You're the silent, you're the silent person, Chris. Thank you.
All right, any comments or questions for Mr. Miller?
I do have one.
Right.
Relooking at the public information, the only caveat I wanted to add is something in there, the newer phrase, digital media specialist, that maybe is some kind of background in digital media, because that seems to be a, a new term that's used for college graduates is digital media. So that would be helpful to have a young person or somebody that's well-versed in digital media.
Definitely. I guess I did have one other item. So I know that we had, we had Ms. Hart here, and we have Sheriff Giles. It was my understanding, the direction, I just wanted to get this clear, that this is something that the board wants to see on a monthly basis, is some kind of a report on cigarette collection and enforcement. I just wanted to reinforce that, because I think we missed the last meeting in September, and I know there were some conflicts with some scheduling, but I do think that there is a way to provide a written report if you can't actually appear in person.
Correct. That's, I think that's what we all spoke about, just like Mr. Jones or somebody from his staff has been doing for the last two years, something along those lines, some, somebody from those departments to give us some type of update. Thank you.
Ms. Bender, Mr. Chairman, you didn't, you're not discriminating against elderly for applying for the digital, for that position, are you?
No, because I'd be at a deficit, too. I'm a comm major, but, you know, it's been a little while, but...
But, but, you know, older people can have the skills also.
Maybe you should apply.
I can't. Thank you.
All right. If you guys are all done, Mr. Granger?
I move that the King George County Board of Supervisors convene in closed meeting pursuant to State Code Section 2.2-3711A3 and A5 to discuss a prospect for community center programming that involves a prospective business or industry where there is no previous announcement of a business or industry locating or expanding in the community, and disposition of publicly-held real property. I invite the county administrator and county attorney to attend as needed, because their presence will reasonably aid the board in its consideration of the topics to be discussed pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3712F.
Second.
We have a motion properly seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We are in closed session.
I'm sure that's true.
Ready for me to?
So, were you ready, Mr. Dines? Okay, I'd like to call this.
I got a read first. I move that the King George County Board of Supervisors return to public meeting and certify by vote that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law, and only such business -- public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered during the closed meeting.
We have a motion properly seconded and seeing any discussion, seeing none, all in favor. Oh, I'm sorry. We're so certified by vote, please.
So certify.
So certify.
So certify.
So certify.
Chair, so certify as we are in open session?
I move to adjourn until Tuesday, November 1st at 6:30 p.m. in the board room.
Second.
You have a motion properly seconded, any discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, we're in closed session. Thank you. I'm sorry, we're adjourned.